Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Now, we're at the adoption of the agenda. If I can have someone to make a motion. Ms. Smith?
Second.
Mr. Parrish, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, at the last meeting, we were here again on the applicant's request for rezoning of this property from RR5 to R2. A public hearing was opened on July 7, 2021, and recessed to today. The public was heard from by us, and then the public comment was closed after a couple of hours. I now declare the public hearing closed, and I open the floor to members for discussion, motions, and possible vote. It is, however, permissible pursuant to RCC 170-133, Section 4, upon a motion and second duly passed to defer the matter to another date and time for more discussion or a vote. And opening it to the Board.
And, Chair, last time we met, I know before we recessed this particular public hearing, I made reference to the Albemarle Land Use Guide, and I'm happy to start the discussion however you would like. I would like to thank everybody for coming back out again tonight. I think the constraints of having eight public hearings in one evening definitely wore on us and on you when we met last Wednesday. It's certainly something we try to do to schedule all of our public hearings in the evening to allow for the most public involvement, to make them during hours when folks aren't at work, with the thought that that would allow more people to participate. Unfortunately, it seemed like last Wednesday, trying to fit eight public hearings in one evening, it had exactly the opposite effect, and everybody felt rushed and unhappy with only having a few hours and then moving on to other matters, and understandably so, I would say. So I just wanted to first thank everybody for coming back out this evening so we could work through this agenda item. We were here until midnight last Wednesday, and so I do think it was a good thing that we continued it until this evening. I do think that this application, we should discuss diligently and make the findings required in the Albemarle Land Use Guide that I referenced at our last meeting. So I'm happy to have that discussion, and thank everybody for coming back out again this evening so we could take up this application again.
Since it's in your district, I think we should continue with any of your statements or comments.
Well, I mean, it has been the tradition that the individual that whose district it is can either go first, I think, or defer until the end. But I think the best way forward is to have the discussion based on the Code of Virginia 15.2-2284, and based from the section in the Albemarle Land Use Guide titled "The Relevant Factors to Be Considered in a Res zoning," which we reviewed with Dr. Chandler at the training that he gave us. I wondered if everybody had a chance to review those questions or points. So the first point to consider in terms of a rezoning is the existing use and character of the property. I think it's been well documented that the existing use of the property is that it's just in pretty much agriculture. It functions as a hayfield. It's zoned RR5, and that's been the character of the property for quite some time. And, I mean, does anyone have any other thoughts, or?
Sure. One thing I would just point out, in addition to the provision of state code you point to, which is 22, I think you pointed to 2284.
Correct.
And 83 before that, I think, is also relevant, which states the fundamental purpose of zoning ordinance is. I would also draw everyone's attention to Section 170-35 of our zoning ordinance, and in particular, the definitions, Items C and D under the preamble. C and D refer to a rural residential district, and I think it's important that we keep in mind that, according to our zoning ordinance, a rural residential district reflects the existence of rural residential development and/or those areas where agriculture, sorry, agriculture and forestal activity are not the predominant uses, and the soils and lot sizes are not generally suited for the same. And then, second, Item D, referring to residential district, reflects those areas where small lots exist, and those areas around the village where such lots would be in keeping with the existing character and provide for some expansion of the village. So I certainly appreciate your reference to the relevant provisions of state code, and I think we also need to pull in, to our analysis, relevant provisions of our own Rapid County zoning ordinance. So, just for background.
Sure. And I would just say, I think Michelle has documented well in her staff report that there's a variety of zonings in the surrounding area, including RR5, agricultural, and R2, if I remember correctly. Michelle, is that correct? Thank you.
The one thing on that point that I would note is, and sometime ago I requested from Ms. Summers, basically, an aggregation of tax maps that shows both the, and this might be it, it shows not only the, this is mostly it, it shows not only the zoning classification for different parcels, but then lots, or for different zoning districts, but within those lot sizes. And one thing I note, or noted in my analysis, is that as you go from Sperryville, which is, the villages Sperryville, which is zone Village Residential, and you move up Woodward Road toward Estes Mill Road, both to the west and to the north, I believe, there were other RR5 zoning districts. And within those, I noted that there were many lots that were, in fact, slightly larger than even the minimum lot size of five acres that would be permitted in a RR5 zoning designation. And then, to the south, of course, I think we're all now well aware that we have primarily agricultural land and fairly large parcels. So it's certainly a very debatable question, the Mount Airy field parcel at 35 acres where it's located. RR5 would call for a minimum lot size of five acres, and R2, of course, would be two. And the fairly debatable question here that I think we've all wrestled with now for months is whether two-acre lots or five-acre lots fit with the flow of density from the village going both to the west and the north and the south, and then finally, the highway commercial zone along 211. So I think, at least from my perspective, it's been important to take, to the extent possible, bird's-eye view of the zoning designations in the surrounding area, and then within those zoning designations, the lot sizes relative to what we're considering.
Do you have something to add?
I don't know if I have something to add, but just an observation that I've had during the process, excuse me, our comprehensive plan, which we, the Board adopted, the latest version of it, I guess, back in December, we reiterated, re-adopted the same language that's been in there for over 30 years now, that we want growth to be around the villages. And in the agricultural area, the minimum lot size is two-acre zoning, but we have 25-acre density, and that has been misinterpreted by many to be 25-acre lots. And that has really caused, if you will, a destruction of the agricultural community into a bunch of 25-acre lots that doesn't serve anybody well, except maybe the guy that sells compact tractors, because with 25 acres, almost everybody needs a tractor. It's very, very difficult to farm on 25 acres, so what they have to wind up doing is to keep it in land use to avoid rollback taxes, is get somebody down the road to make hay on it or whatever. So it's been a real problem. And here we have a property that's served, or can be served, by the sewer system, and we have the Chair of the Water and Sewer Authority that says that they can handle the additional lots. You also have the ability, for planning purposes, you have the ability to look at this property now and in the future, when there's a subdivision that is applied for, the county has the opportunity to look at those lots, the configuration of those lots, how they, you know, meet the roads. And also, that will require a water study. And if they can't make a water study at that time, then you don't get the lots. So this really is a good thing for a community, and the owner, the private industry, if you will, is bearing the run of those costs. So we have, I believe, we're following the comprehensive plan if we take a look at, you know, growth around the villages, and we have a piece of property that adjoins the sewer system or can be served by the sewer system, and I think it's pretty simple for me to make that conclusion. What you have is a pretty good fit, I think. And I think when you go around looking at the way that the county, we've been trying to preserve agriculture in the county, even though it's, like I say, it's been misinterpreted, and we have people creating a bunch of 25-acre lots, what you have is what might be considered exclusionary zoning practices if, when somebody comes forward and asks for a rezoning to two-acre lot, and we say no, I don't know how we can say it doesn't fit our comprehensive plan. And at the same time, we continue with this 25-acre density, two-acre minimum in agricultural area that nobody really follows. We did that so that we could have, another term that is called is cluster development, if you will. So you could have a couple of two-acre lots around your 94, 96-acre residue, and you could continue farming. That didn't happen for most intents and purposes. So I think it's something that we really need to look at. It's really not difficult to make the argument that two-acre zoning near the village like this follows a comprehensive plan.
I guess one other thing that I would want to say at this time, in terms of the use and character of the property, is that, as Mr. Brown described when we met last, with this RR5 zoning, the property owner could go out tomorrow and by right build multiple houses, five, six houses of varying dimensions and, you know, different, it could be huge. McMansions, I think, was the name that folks were talking about. There's no limits on what they could do on those five-acre lots. So, but that, the five-acre zoning is also an appropriate use of that property. But it could be done. It could easily be developed as five-acre lots.
Correct. Ms. Smith, you make an excellent point, and maybe I could just say what I frankly did not take into account in my analysis, because it dovetails with what you just said about the fact that it already is zoned for minimum parcels of five acres. I want to say, first of all, we hear this word a lot, have heard this word a lot in this discussion, and that's the question of whether this is going to set precedent. And for whatever it's worth, my view is it is decidedly not a precedential decision. And it's, in my view, largely because we're wrestling with one application for rezoning, and we've been doing it now for more than six months. And each application for rezoning that might come before this body or any future body will stand on its own. So I reject the notion that this would, the decision here, whether it's tonight or some other day, would in any way set precedent for opening the county to development. I disagree with that premise. The second thing is, I want to state that I appreciated all of the people who spoke before the Planning Commission and on multiple occasions to the Board of Supervisors, some of whom talked about what a beautiful view it is across that property, and how much they enjoy walking their dogs and going for walks, and how they don't want to see it change. And I think what's lost in that is the fact that the Taylor family is a private property owner, and for their own decisions have basically utilized it as a hayfield for a long time. And so I did not take into account the fact that, and I don't say this to be harsh, but I don't think it's relevant to our analysis of a rezoning application for a specific parcel, that people sure enjoy the view. I think it's worthwhile to state that, but that's not an argument for or against rezoning, in my opinion. Regarding the sewer, I did sit on the Rapid County Water and Sewer Authority for about four years, and frankly, I can't sit here now with 100% confidence that the plant has the capacity or is in the condition to handle, you know, 13 more homes on that parcel or additional homes that might come on other parcels. But that said, I feel as though the sewer is adequate, sewer system is adequate, and the capacity is there, but still, in an effort to focus my analysis on the parcel in question, and the ultimate question of whether RR5 zoning is reasonable zoning, I did not take into account sewer capacity or the condition of the sewer system. The question of view shed and aesthetics, I think, is an important one, but that's also tied to the question of precedent. And so when people express concern that we need to hold tight to preservation of our view sheds and overall aesthetics, I believe that that's more a county-wide concern, that if we allow this rezoning to go through, and there's greater density on this parcel, then that will threaten other view sheds throughout the county. And I say that because, in fact, as we know, the minimum acre, minimum parcel size here is five acres, and there could be six homes soon on this parcel, and to that end, that beautiful view across this property will not be quite as beautiful as it currently is. So I did not take into account the aesthetics or the question of view shed in my analysis. Also, I did not take into account the fact that more people seem to oppose this application than those who support it. Again, I think that that is distracting, and I think that, from what I've been able to study on questions of rezoning, the focus should not be on this as a popularity contest. And I think we all can recognize that the Taylor family have been great citizens, and certainly, they've lived here a lot longer than me, but I also did not take into account that the Taylors are great people. So I just put all that out there because I think it's important for everyone to know, at least from where I sit, what I did take into account. And finally, the question of affordable housing has been brought up repeatedly, and I think that one is a tough one to slice and dice, too. And I don't think that any of us can say what would happen with the buildings on that parcel with two-acre lots or five-acre lots. I live in a nice house on 1.1 acres. I could probably put a really nice house on two acres and be, you know, twice as comfortable as I am now. And I don't know that the affordable housing question really is one that should distract our analysis. So I just say that in summary, because ultimately, as I've said several times, I focused on the parcel, I focused on the flow of density from the villages Sperryville going outward, both west, south, and north, and I asked the fundamental question, why, at some point in time, did someone or some people ascribe to this parcel an RR5 zoning designation? And I believe that is probably an unanswerable question. I have not been able to find the answer to that, but the question in my mind has been, is that designation reasonable for the parcel where it is cited? And then, to Ms. Smith's point, certainly, I've reviewed the Section 15.2, 2283, and 84 of state code, and I think there is a lot of material in there that informs our decision tonight regarding public safety, convenience of access, and the question of congestion, and certainly, those are all relevant factors, given the width of Woodward Road and Estes Mill Road. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
There's points, I think, if we work through this 10-300, that will get through a lot of things we've already touched on this evening. But certainly, Mr. Parrish or Ms. Donahue, if you have something to add, I don't want to just move on to the next point. Are you okay with me bringing up the next point?
Absolutely.
From the outline. The next point to consider, the relevant factor to be considered in a rezoning, is the comprehensive plan. And, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Woodson, you've already alluded to how this application fits with the current version of the comprehensive plan. I would say, from all the folks that I heard about, and actually, first read in the staff report prepared by Ms. Summers, one of the most telling passages is the future land use on page 96 of the current version of the comprehensive plan. It says, "Current zoning in and around villages generally reflects current and historical uses of the land. As noted in the preceding chapters, this comprehensive plan envisions and encourages that future residential and commercial development be focused in or around the major villages, consistent with undeveloped potential of the current zoning district designations." And so, to my mind, as mentioned in the staff report, and this was very specific wording that Mr. Light actually worked through with the Planning Commission in December, this language, to me, is very succinct in its advocacy of infill around the villages and not changing current zoning practices. And I know we heard that from Claire Catlett from PEC, and I had several communications that brought this to my attention, and also, like I said originally, the staff report prepared by Ms. Summers. So I wasn't sure how everyone else felt about that, but I know the staff report also suggests that if we're not to follow this language, then we should consider revising this section of our comprehensive plan.
So I've asked myself repeatedly, is this an example of spot zoning? Even though it's, you know, butts up next to the town of Sperryville, I worry that it possibly could be considered, you know, spot zoning in terms of it establishing a precedent for future development. It's not going to, you know, preclude that, but it's also not necessarily going to force that to happen. So I also don't think the affordability is much of an issue. I think a two-acre lot and a five-acre lot are really worth about the same amount of money, almost. And I don't think the sewer is an issue because a two-acre lot's plenty big for a drain fill. The, my main concern is the road, and it's going to challenge that road to take another five or six houses. And we can't lose sight of the fact that all the frontage across the road is also zoned RR5. So in addition to five or six lots on Mount Airy, we could have that many more on the other side of the road, and that would further stress Woodward Road. And it was pointed out during the public hearing that if we'd gone ahead and adopted the map, you know, the village maps with what I call a belt around them, that, you know, our decision would already be made. Well, at my urging, we did not adopt that map, but that map did not include Mount Airy in the, as R2. It included, it left it as RR5. So I don't know what, I mean, the Planning Commission, in an indirect way, pointed us in that direction, you know. The worst part about this job is, you know, is voting on issues and making decisions that affect, you know, people that we know. It's a small community. We know everybody, you know, and Mr. Taylor and I have been dealing with each other since before he was a builder, when he was working for the ASCS office, and I was reporting all my crop acreage to him as a farmer. And that's a long time ago. I don't know, 40-some years ago, at least. And, you know, I trust him. However, I can't protect him from unforeseeable, you know, circumstances. They've talked about a bridge. I don't know what a bridge costs. I mean, it could be completely, you know, untenable to do anything about a bridge and divert the traffic off of Woodward Road. And, you know, I actually, not too long ago, owned a house on Woodward Road, and, you know, I'm really intimately familiar with the fact that that road cannot really handle traffic, any more traffic safely. So on that basis alone, I don't think I can support this. I'm sorry about that. Tom?
Thanks, Chris. And that does point to one of the other factors that we should consider, which is the transportation requirements of the community. And that's something that certainly, I think, has been key to this application, and we have heard from a lot of people on it. And I know a lot of folks, and I would echo your sentiment, that they sure like Mr. Taylor, but they sure still worry about some of the things that this rezoning would create.
And just looking at it from my standpoint, I've talked to a lot of people, and we've heard from a lot, so obviously, this is a very important issue in this county, and I'm very proud that so many people get involved. Thank you for that. One of the statements that Mr. Conick made probably a year ago or close to it, that, I don't quote Mr. Conick, but he said, "Mr. Taylor's a nice man, but why would you do this?" And I don't, we can't look at it as, "He's a nice man, so let's do it," because I've got a lot of nice neighbors that said, "Sure, let me know when it's done, and I'll be right there signing up," which has me concerned for the county in the way that we are really trying to control the growth that is just surrounding us so quickly. I do worry about Woodward Road, congestion, tight turns. If you had to put in a bridge, it would be crazy expensive. I don't feel like, even though we hear affordable housing, to me, it's almost like, "Oh, the money's going to go to the fire department, or the money's going to go to police, so give us your money." And then you don't necessarily know where the money ends up, because it went into the general fund. That's how I feel like at the state level. So I don't have anything in my mind that says to me, absolutely, this is what's going to happen, and, you know, this is, who's going to build it by this date, and it's going to be a $25,000, $250,000 home or a $300,000 home. I just didn't see proffers that made me feel like I could honestly vote comfortably, feeling like something could happen tomorrow and Mr. Taylor decided to move. We don't know. And that's where a vote like this is very difficult for me, because I'm a people person. But to try and vote for a particular person to have more dens, or more lots, to me, it's like, how am I going to say no to the next person in the same situation? And you may not have a sewer system And you may not have a sewer system right next door, but there are some pretty fancy septic systems you can put in these days that could do a very similar situation on a small parcel, 20 acres or less. So in my mind, I just didn't feel like I could take the information that we were given listening for six months or so, what we heard, and say to Mr. Taylor that I could support the upzoning. So I'm sorry about that, but I don't think... well, I know, I can't support this either.
The one other aspect, I think, of the application that I wanted to touch on that is one of the relevant factors to be considered in a rezoning, is the trends of growth or change in an area. And that was something that seemed very key to Dr. Chandler when discussing if you should consider an upzoning. If there had been trends of change to where it makes sense to rezone a property that would support this, I just haven't seen that. I will say I have heard from some folks, and I do understand this point of view, that we need places for middle-class families to live, that we need places for policemen, and teachers, and firefighters, and all those folks to live. And I understand that, and I actually agree with that 100%. I just can't get to a place where rezoning this property makes those places with the application as we have it in front of us today. And I don't know if anyone has anyone else... anything else to say or add, I think?
Well, yeah, I'd like to say a couple of things. As far as the alternative sewer systems, those are only for single-family residences and single lots. We really don't allow packaged plants for subdivisions. So that's really not a factor, I don't believe. What you have to look at, though, even when the interest rate was, you know, 8%, 9%, 10%, two-person income, combined income of $60,000 could buy a $300,000 home. And now the interest rate is way, way lower than that, so I think salaries are higher. A two-person income could make those affordable homes. Whereas if they had, you know, the half-million-dollar shack on five acres, it becomes impossible for the same family to make their purchase. The applicant proposed at the last meeting that they would bring the traffic out on 211. I think what Mr. Curry sent us today under a subdivision ordinance would preclude any of those lots from going out on the 50-foot... anything less than a 50-foot right-of-way. So Woodward Road really isn't in the equation. So what we're really looking at, in my view, in my opinion, is whether two-acre lots abutting the rest of those village two-acre lots is compatible with the community. It's served by a sewer, or it could be served by private drain fields. The applicant said that they would... and showed us how that they would bring the traffic out on 211. Our zoning ordinance requires that. They went further beyond what's required by this phase of the zoning ordinance at this point, because they've showed us the lot sizes and configuration of a subdivision, which isn't required at this point. And yet, we still bring up things that aren't relevant at this level of discussion. And that's not a good thing.
Mr. Frazier, as always, I appreciate your experience with zoning matters far beyond my own. And I would just say again, at least from where I sit, my focus has been on the parcel and the citing of that parcel in relation to the other zoning districts in the vicinity, and then the parcel sizes within those surrounding zoning districts. And then asking the question, is the current RR5 zoning designation for the Mount Airy parcel reasonable? And so I agree with you, in fact, that questions... question... detailed questions of transportation and access might not ultimately be the source of the answer to the question of whether the current zoning is reasonable. And I certainly have tried to put my blinders on and just focus on that question. Why is it zoned the way it is? And what is the proposal? And is the current zoning reasonable or not? So I appreciate you drawing attention to the latest proposal, which in fact would drive traffic off of 211 as opposed to Woodward Road. Thank you.
Any other discussion, Ms. Smith?
Um, I mean, I'm willing to hear from other folks. Those were, I think, the most pertinent sections, as far as I could tell, regarding this particular application. Other things to take in mind and into consideration are the suitability of the property for various uses. We've already sort of touched on that. The trends of growth or change. I think we've had it pretty well documented at the previous meeting, that we're really in a no-growth trend as a county. And I haven't, you know, I don't know that you could say that there's been trends of change to drive development out Woodward Road, especially with the hodgepodge of zoning out there that we currently see. The current and future requirements of the community as to land for various purposes, as determined by population and economic and other studies. I don't really know that that has any bearing on this application. Transportation requirements, requirements for airports, housing, schools, parks, playgrounds, recreational areas, and other public services. Most of that, I don't think, would apply. I know some folks have talked about affordable housing. I would say at two acres, it's probably more middle-class housing or working-family housing. And then in terms of the schools, I've heard some talk from folks against the application that upzoning this property would increase costs in our schools. And I just don't think there's the data to support that, since so much of the cost associated with our schools is fixed overhead and doesn't increase on a per-student basis. Other public services would be sewer, but we've already, I think, had the discussion that at two or five, they could just have their own drain field on the lot. So that wouldn't really be a factor to consider. The conservation of natural resources, preservation of floodplains, and protection of life and property from structure failures, preservation of agriculture and forestal land, and conservation of properties and their values. I don't think that this is such an upzoning that those come into play. And the encouragement of the most appropriate land throughout locality, I think we've already touched on, if the current zoning is appropriate and a reasonable use of this parcel. So those are the findings that I'm glad... and I thank you all for taking some time to go through them and gather your thoughts as well. I do think we need to consider the state of Woodward Road, and it's been very well documented. I think we would do well to also include, if we're to consider denying this request for a rezoning application, to include the language from page 97 of the comprehensive plan that I recited earlier.
And if it's going to be subdivided, it wouldn't affect Woodward Road. If we keep putting Woodward Road in the equation, Woodward Road would be out of the equation with the subdivision.
Well, I mean, I guess we could omit that language and simply use this language from the comprehensive plan.
What language would that be? Because if we're going to continue using Woodward Road as a scapegoat, it's not applicable. If the property is subdivided for these lots, it would have to come out on a road with 50-foot right-of-way.
Well, I mean...
So that would be 211.
I think if you're hanging your hat on the future of something that we don't have in front of us...
That would be in front of us. If the two-acre...
Mr. Frazier, I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking.
I'm sorry, but I'm just trying to say that's...
Well, I'm trying to say this now, which is that I understand that you're trying to hang your hat on another possible solution, but we can't count that Woodward Road will always look the way that it looks now. It may look different in the future, just as what you're saying may be different in the future.
Now, our zoning ordinance would require subdivisions of five lots or more to go through the process, where it would have to come out on roads of 50-foot width. So if this property is subdivided, maybe even with the five or seven-acre lots, Woodward Road is no longer applicable.
Just for clarification, I believe you're referring to the subdivision ordinance.
The subdivision ordinance.
Right.
But they can't get the two-acre zoning lots that this would allow. This stuff would allow two-acre lots, but they would have to come up with a subdivision plan. And then they would fall under the subdivision ordinance, which would require the 50-foot right-of-way. So Woodward Road would not be in play anymore. It's not a 50-foot road width or right-of-way.
Right. And I think that's the basis of the note that I sent to the board earlier today.
Right. And the applicant for the rezoning has already shown that they would come out on 211, so we keep talking about Woodward Road and the traffic on Woodward Road, but it's no longer applicable.
And but I also do want to point out, like a rezoning is subject to change through a public hearing, so is your ordinance. And so it is a moment in time, and that is what the subdivision ordinance says today. What it says when they apply will apply in that particular case, which may or may not be what it says today.
Who in their right mind would take that out of the ordinance at some time in the future? Is the drug problem that bad in Sperryville or the rest of the county that they would do something like that?
Can't answer that question. I just want to point out that it is the ordinance today, and that is... that should be in the board's mind. And rezoning changes over a public hearing and through this process, as can the ordinance, any number of sections of the ordinance. So I don't want you to think that the ordinance is forever-changing, it's impossible to ever make a decision. I just want to make sure you understand that point.
Is it not an acceptable proffer, what the applicant proposed in the last meeting? That's not considered a proffer?
The applicant is welcome to proffer whatever they choose to proffer. They've so far proffered certain changes to which uses are permitted there. That is all. I just want to make sure that's clear, the proffer statement's attached. They've made no proffers relative to transportation or anything else.
And under our current subdivision ordinance, that's what would be required. I can't see anybody in their right mind changing that to something less and having those lots come out on Woodward Road when it's not allowed under the current one.
Of course, it would have broad application across the entire county, would not be micro-focused on one parcel, would be the entire county. I can't speak to what the pros and cons to changing that for the entire county might be and what may outweigh the other. I just wanted to make sure it was clear in referencing this section.
If we go down that rabbit hole, we would never approve or disprove anything because of what somebody else may do sitting here three or five years in the future. We can't lock somebody else in another board, they can do anything they want to, but that doesn't make any sense. Maybe that's how it would happen then. Because it doesn't make sense they would do it.
So if there's no further discussion, I would make a motion that we adopt the resolution attached in the agenda from the Board of Supervisors of Rappahannock County to deny the rezoning application, RZ 20-10-01, to reclassify 35-plus minus acres owned by Mount Airy Field LLC as it's presented in the packet with the addition of the language. Well, it's already in there. As the comprehensive plan states, as noted in the preceding chapters, this comprehensive plan envisions and encourages this resident... future residential and commercial development be focused in or around major villages consistent with the undeveloped potential of current zoning district designations.
Madam Chair, I will second the motion, and I do have some additions to the draft resolution that's in our packet. And I'll just stand down to see if anyone else has comments before going into those.
I do not. Mr. Parrish?
And Ms. Smith, since you've made the motion, I can just walk you through these edits and see if they're acceptable to you. And I'll... this is not numbered, so bear with me. Three, four, five. In the sixth whereas reads, "The subject property is located within a residential area near the major unincorporated village of Sperryville. It is currently zoned RR5, which is rural residential." So I would ask for the word rural to be inserted before residential. The following whereas, and I appreciate very much Mr. Frazier's input, it currently reads, "Whereas the existing surface width of Woodward Road to both approach directions does not meet current Vida geometric design standards." I would change that... I would propose that we change that to read, "Whereas the existing access to the parcel..." and then, "Whereas the existing access to the parcel could lead to potential adverse effects on convenience of access and safety from fire, and could limit the facilitation of transportation, water, and sewer services within the meaning of Section 15.2-2283 of the Code of Virginia." And I have this written out, should you want to review it. And then finally, the very last two clauses, the last whereas, "Whereas the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors yet further finds that the current residential rural district RR5 zoning is most appropriate." I would add after the word appropriate, "and reasonable for the site, given the environmental constraints, traffic concerns, and the general harmony with adjacent..." and continue on, "and nearby zoning districts and parcels within those zoning districts." I'm sorry. "And the size of parcels within those zoning districts." And those are my proposed edits. I tried to be clear. And I think in that way, we've addressed our obligation under state code to pin our decision on specific findings related to that specific parcel.
I'm fine with those amendments. Does anyone else have anything that they wanted to collude in the resolution?
All right.
Thank you for sorting out that additional language.
We have a motion and a second on the edited version. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll-call vote. Mr. Frazier?
Nay.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Got it.
Mr. Curry, do you need me to clarify any of those edits with you right now?
No, I don't believe so. I think between the recording and your notes, I should be able to get it.
Okay.
If I have any questions, I will let you know.
Well, thank you all very much for... this has been a long one for all of us, and not just today, but months. I think it was definitely educational. I would entertain a motion.
I so moved it when you joined.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Sorry. Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also.
Got it.